I'm gonna let Jason walk you through some of the plans that I'm going to be displaying here. Dave put together a set for me that we can talk about and Jason, if you want to go through it, highlight, you know, some of the things that are-
It'd be good if you could show the, show them on the screen there too.
Not planning to do that. And Jason, if you want to go through and highlight some of the features that you think the council needs to know about as we are at 95% construction drawings and we'll also show the landscape plan. So.
Well, you can, I will just, if I could just start for a second by saying, a couple of weeks ago, we received stormwater concept approval from DPS. So the, the stormwater management plan is ready, is, is, is good to go with the, the scheme that we're proposing. And we're submitting now for final permits from all the review agencies, be it Park and Planning, S H A, DPS, and W S S C. So just kind of a little preamble, kind of tell you where we are in, in the process. So once we got this, the stormwater approval, I think it allowed us to, to advance the plans a little bit further along. So a couple of things, since the last time that we spoke through the review process and in working with Todd and Dave, some things that have been tweaked. That I just want to like, kind of cover some highlights there. If we're going to look at the plan that's in front of us here, if we, we could start on the, the left, yep, perfect. There's a little flagstone kind of circle oval area at the end of the Dennison Garden. And one of the things that we wanted to do to make it a little more purposeful is we're going to expand that a little bit so that we can put the bench on it. We kind of had a bench before that was near it, but that oval was not big enough to support it. And having kind of just a random bench right near the oval didn't seem to make a lot of sense. So we are going to expand the oval so that we can put the bench on the oval and make it kind of a personal, a, a purposeful like resting spot. Uh, there's a larger overall at the other end of Dennison Garden. So this kind of will help mimic it a little bit. And then as we move towards-
Jason, are you considering that that oval that's there would be like three times the size of what's there now?
Uh, I, I don't know if it's three times, but it's, it's yeah, five or six feet right now. So it's, it's, it's going to go up to, you know, like you said, about, about 15 by 11 ish at the, uh, there. So yeah, I mean, and, and what's there will be, will be demolished and then this will be built in its place. Because they'll, they'll lay out the new stone to mimic, you know, what's there from a, a flagstone standpoint.
And when you say what's there will be demolished, I see that the three, uh, there's a few trees planted to kind of the, if you're looking at Dennison Garden, it'll be like just due north of that, those trees will stay.
Yeah, we're not removing, removing trees. We're just demoing the concrete that's there, the, the pavers and like-
And expanding onto like what is now the grass or sorry lawn grass area. Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay.
An alternative, an alternative for the council to consider is leave the, the, the landing there as is and just delete the bench from that location. Retake the bench in the garden and retain the bench further north here. I would just leave that same, whatever the council thinks is most appropriate, we can proceed with.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, what you're not seeing on this particular plan is some of the grading. Um, there's a little bit of grading there. Uh, there's a, I think everybody's aware that's been out there. There's a channel that kind of goes from kind of the end of the, the current walk down to the inlet that the county has there. So, um, you know, putting the bench like real close to the, the, the circle there. Um, would, would kind of maybe cause a little bit of a grading problem there to, to still put a, a pad in big enough for ADA.
Yeah, the, the, the bench was free float, it's sort of free standing right here. Didn't make a lot of sense. So we're like, let's, Dave's idea was let's increase the size of the pad, put the bench there. It's a nice landing area between benches all along the expanse of the park.
It actually helped with grading a little bit too. One of the things I, I wanted to point out that's different than before is we have a, a small landscape infiltration area. I don't know, Todd, can you point to, to that? Uh, right. Yep. Just right there. Yes. Um, that is, it was kind of the, the compromise with DPS to, to achieve stormwater compliance. So the, the, that whole sidewalk area and, and the, the area between Maple Ave and, and the sidewalk is all going to be draining into this landscape infiltration area. Which will be a, a shallow depression of about, uh, eight, eight to 10 inches. Thereabouts, I guess it point nine feet. So that's maybe pushing 11 inches. Of total depth and it would be planted, um, kind of like a rain garden, uh, but the water goes in. Uh, in that area, we had a, an acceptable infiltration rate, uh, for the county. So we were able to, to do that. So we, we had achieved the stormwater, full, uh, stormwater requirements, uh, by using this landscape infiltration. Um, there's no riser structure. It's just the, the, the water will infiltrate, um, to the subgrade below. So the water flows in. It infiltrates and, and, and goes down, um, into the, percolates into the soil below. Uh, and then we don't have a riser structure like a, uh, I think people have, are familiar with, with the rain garden. There's the big concrete riser in there. Because this is kind of upfront, we didn't want to have a, a riser structure and overflow, you know, type, uh, structure. So the way that it's going to work. The water, there'll be a, a, a grass weir, uh, so kind of a, a lower spot on the right-hand edge of the landscape infiltration. If in a really heavy rain event, it fills up, it will actually spill over and run out onto, to maple and then down, um, down the road into the, uh, the, what am I thinking? This, the flume that's down at the end of the, down at the end of the street. And the reason we did that is that we don't have that like kind of, as you kind of come into the park, you, you're not going to have that concrete thing sticking up. And, uh, and then it just basically looked like a, a, a small depressed landscape area there.
So Jason, back to the oval that will now have, be bigger and have a bench on it. Are, are we also elevating that, um, area of Dennison or, or that area where the new bigger oval will be?
Uh, no, it's going to be very similar to existing grade.
Okay.
There, except it, the, the, the whole oval will be set, uh, you know, at about one and a half percent slope. So it's ADA compliant. Um, so it'd be relatively flat oval.
Okay. I only ask because when there are rainstorms and the, um, the rains coming, say off of East West Highway and down the, 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 is it the beam, bream, whatever that's called, that the, um, all the rocks and it kind of flows over what is now the oval. Sometimes there's some, some mulch and dirt like kind of pushed onto the existing flagstones. I wasn't sure if that was being addressed or is the idea that the size is just that much bigger that it should, it should be able to flow over. I, I don't know.
Well, I, I, I think, um, the area around it will certainly be stabilized. Then we can work with Mike. Uh, we could also do some turf reinforcement matting or something there so that there isn't erosion around that immediate area. And I think we'll talk, uh, a little bit later. Potential to, as a, as an alternate to consider is removing some of the existing non-native, um, planting, the Nandina. Um, isn't there some in that area, Todd, as well?
Nandina.
Nandina, sorry.
Dave, there is some here, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah. And then-
But we'll, we'll, we'll address that when we get to landscape plan. We don't have-
The comment, I, I, I think the idea of enlarging that circle and putting a bench there makes a lot of sense. I like it. Uh, but I'd recommend that, you check back with the committee that put together the business and gardens. So they're aware that that's something we'd like to do. Uh, because there are, there are plantings around that, aren't there right now?
Well, that's why I asked about the, the trees and those won't be touched.
Understood.
Effectively. Not, not the trees, but there's some ground cover that would be disturbed.
It's just-
Right. I, I just think it'd be a good order just to let them know that we're planning to do that and, you know,
Yep. No problem.
Get their buy-in to it and the reason why. And basically it's to enlarge the space sufficient to put a bench there. I mean, it's not, it's not meant to be larger than what's required to put a bench, right?
Okay. Yeah. I mean, it, it, the, the, the whole idea is that you'd still have a, a sidewalk through there.
Okay.
One of the other things I, I think I, I just want to point out is that we're currently showing a, a five-foot sidewalk. The existing sidewalk up by Dennison Gardens, four feet wide.
That's okay. I think, I think five feet makes sense. Four feet's quite narrow.
Five, five feet is the state standard for accessible walks. So you, you can go down to four, but the, the five feet's typical. So we kind of assume that it, we, we put it in as kind of for the, the, the typical that this would be done in, in the state.
Is there a difference in costs in terms of the, I mean, it's a long walkway to East West Highway. Is there a difference? What is the difference in cost from going down or going up from four to five? Well, what is the-
It's just a square footage of, uh-
No, no, but what is the, what is, what are we talking about in terms of money, in terms of the difference?
Well, I, one of the questions I, I wanted to ask is a confirmation about what the surface was going to be. Um, and that'll drive the cost. So if, um, we, I think have been envisioning, um, keeping it flagstone, but I wanted to get some, yes, I guess some, some buy-in on whether you wanted to go with concrete or stamped concrete that looks like flagstone or just stick with and match Dennison Garden.
Match Dennison Garden. So there's a bit of a continuity. That's my-
So, so in, in terms of square footage, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna, you know, be quite a, an increase in cost, uh, to go from four to five. It's, you know, I mean, it, uh, you're probably looking somewhere in the neighborhood of $20 or $25 a square foot. Um, at least. So for that walkway.
Help me out. What does that mean? How many dollars then are we talking about?
Uh, I'm, you know, I don't know the exact length of this. It's a, it's a couple hundred feet anyways. So, um, I'm sure it's probably pushing 10 grand.
Okay.
10, 10, $10,000 to, to, to widen it out.
Jason, you, in your, in your cost estimate, uh, indicated a five.
Yeah, we, we, I think we've always been figuring that. I think I just wanted to point out and make sure that, you know, there wasn't a surprise when somebody goes out there and they're walking down Dennison Garden and it's four feet wide. And then when you get to the new part, it's five.
No, I was just, I was just-
Yeah, but we, we had figured on five in the cost estimate. I, I mean, orig- originally when we did the concept.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Joy.
Um, is there a, uh, I guess a, would that create a problem in terms of permitting? If we were going to go for four feet versus five or-
Uh, the only point, the only place it would cause a problem is in the state right of way.
Okay.
You, you own your right of way and you own your park. So, uh, there wouldn't be any, any issues until you got into the state right of way. You need a waiver from S H A to have anything less than five feet in there right of way.
Well. That's, that's that.
Okay. All right. Let's go on, Jason. We, we've, uh, we're, we're going through our half hour here.
Okay. I'm sorry. Uh, so, uh, a few other things. Uh, there was a desire, I think, uh, the fencing along East West Highway. Um, I, I think we had kind of maintained it, uh, being on the property, but I, I believe there was a desire and we're going to try to make a case with S H A to push it further out into the S H A right of way. Um, and that's something, it's, it's not shown here, but I, I talked to Dave about it and we are going to try to pursue that. So where it's currently showing, it would kind of slide to be on the outside of that, that maple there.
Let me just speak to that guy. That's something I raised with Todd as a question. I, when I went two days ago and looked and really walked around again. Um, yeah, I think the, the, the overall spirit which we have, have endorsed is that we want to maximize the open field as much as we can. And to that end is great. They were going to move the holly trees. We're going to have a larger field on the north end. We're, you know, pushing out into, into meadows. I mean, maple so that the sidewalk is, you know, pushed that way. Um, but it seemed to me there was still a little bit, not a lot, but some additional land that would be useful to capture inside the fence. If we could put the fence in a rounded kind of way, or inside the right of way of the, of the DOT. Uh, so it seemed sensible to ask the question if they'd allow it. Why not? You know, the worst thing they would say no.
And it wouldn't affect the, the placement of the plantings ultimately because they could, uh, S, S H A could come back and say, but it's affecting, um, line of sight.
Whatever.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, uh, I think that is what Barney said makes sense is it, it doesn't hurt to ask. And, you know, at least then we'll know for sure. If they say no, uh, we put it back where we're currently showing it. And if they say yes, then we put it where, you know, and, and pick up that little bit of additional space. So I think the idea is where, where we're currently showing, uh, that dog waste receptacle, we'd kind of curve it out and loop it out closer to the, the LOD line outside of the, the white pine and the maple and then kind of curve it back in. You know, so it matches up. You know, with the fence that's, it, what's it, that's inside the property. Yeah.
Right. That'd be great. Appreciate that.
Yes.
Primary highlights, right, Jason, on this slide that we really wanted to, for, for construction drawings, we can get to landscape in a second.
Yeah. I, I think we're, you know, uh, we have the dog waste receptacles. We have, you know, uh, everything that we had discussed previously. I, I believe we picked up bike racks, uh, trash recycling. Uh, and we have, we have the one picking table and the, and the couple of benches.
Where's the bocce court? Nevermind, nevermind.
Right here. Anything on here, Jason, that you want to talk about that's, oh, I'm done with this one. Hold on a second.
Okay. So, go ahead.
This, this is the tree removal.
This is the landscape plan.
This is, this is-
But you also note the tree removal on this, right?
We do.
Okay. Um, then I, forgive me if I ask my, my questions on this. The, that maple right there where you're, where you're pointing. Why have we let, why have we, was it an oak? Oh, it's a white oak, a five-inch swamp white oak. Why have we left that up?
Well, I mean, that, that tree's in pretty good condition and it, it's not in the way of our proposed construction. Uh, and we're able to work out the grades so that we, you know, I think, you know, in, in talking to Dave and Tolbert and that, that, that tree can, can-
Well, the, the question for my, my colleague, the question, I appreciate that. And I realize it's not in the way of construction. The question for my colleagues is again, in the spirit of trying to open up the lawn as much as possible, uh, and thinking of people playing ball or anything else. I'm, I'm personally very much in favor and I'm anxious to hear, eager to hear about what canopy trees will be planted at the edge in the perimeter. But trying to keep the inner space as clean as possible. And so I'm wondering whether that tree should also go to keep that, just open up that space a bit more. Question.
It's an, it's an unregulated tree. It's under 24 inches. So it, it wouldn't be subject to mitigation from the county standpoint. So really it's personal preference. If, if the town would like to put an X over it, we certainly can.
Actually, I've walked in, it's just like this. Yeah. It's like this. How old is it?
I'm with you. I, I would, I would keep the, I, I would try to keep that space as open as possible. And, you know, missing a tree of that diameter is, it's, it's not fully mature yet, but, um, I wouldn't mind taking that out to get a cleaner line of sight in, in that area.
Okay. What about the one to the, to the right of that?
Wait, wait, wait. I, I want to make sure we hear from, from Irene and, and Joy. What are your thoughts?
I hate taking down trees. Just, I mean, it is close. It's not like it's in the middle of the green space, but I'm not going to be jumping up and down if you all feel that, you know, that is what's impeding um, the maximization of, of green space. I, I, I feel like it's so off to the side that it, it wouldn't necessarily be um, in the way, but that's my opinion.
Joy, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, I'm also, I mean, I, I can appreciate, uh, you know, sort of having a cleaner space, but to be quite honest with you, um, you know, the residents at the time when we did the walkthrough a year or so ago. I mean, they, they were also, you know, very supportive of keeping the trees that we could. And it just doesn't seem to me like we would gain that much by removing the tree. And people are already using the park with the tree there and the open space such as it is. Um, I, I'd be inclined to leave it. Um, unless it were in the way of construction or otherwise, you know, might be damaged during the construction.
All right. I'm not gonna-
It's a small enough tree that, um, if it becomes problematic, it would not be detrimental to remove it after the fact.
Right.
If it became, it's not like a, a, a big tree that falling, it would be extremely expensive. This would be, you know, very easy to remove at, at, at any point because of, because of its size without, you know, worrying about damaging the, any, anything that you, you build with the park.
I'm okay with that answer. I'm not gonna push it. Okay. I will see, I'm willing to see how it looks and then as the residents can comment on it if we want to take it out. Can always take it out another year. Okay. So I want to talk about the landscaping. Oh, by the way, before, you know, in terms of the hard, the, the, the hardscape, I think you've done an excellent job. I might, when you, I'm not commenting further as I thought the placement of the, of where you put it, all the other amenities and has designed and flows. I think it's good. I, you know, this is, it's going to be very nice.
Yep. So I appreciate that, uh, you know, and, and, uh, there's going to be some trees in the, in the green space between uh, the sidewalk and the, and the curb, uh, that we're, we're, uh, installing there, uh, to kind of, kind of define that ledge a little bit.
Are these canopy trees? Are these canopy trees or what?
Uh, can you zoom us? Todd, I, I don't remember what the CCs are off the top of my head. I can't remember. I think it's in the top, upper right.
No.
Yeah.
Ah. Are there any places that we can plant canopy trees?
We, we do have some.
Where?
I think you're on the wrong sheet, Todd.
Yeah. Hold on a second.
Yeah. I think you're-
Oh my God. Well, sorry.
It's, it's jumping. I don't know if you can just zoom out a touch so we can see the planting chart a little bit. Yeah. Okay. So the, the trees, there you go. Yep. So, uh, yeah, there, there, I mean, there will be the red buds in there. Uh, and a, and a couple tulip trees and the, and a sycamore. And I just would like to say, we, we have not gone through, uh, final approvals with park and planning. Um, and they are likely to probably request a few mitigation trees along the way. So we may add a couple. Um, but you'll see most of it's filled in with shrubs and grasses and perennials and ground cover, uh, because it were, were, you know, doing a lot of, uh, plantings on the slopes and then, uh, replanting the rain garden, um, just so that it all kind of meshes and, and, and works together. So, you know, it, there, there's only a, a handful of trees. We, we probably have a little room to add some more, but again, to your point about keeping the, the space open, um, there isn't a lot of room to plant trees. You know, without kind of decreasing the open space. We've kind of stuck everything around the edges as you can see from there. And then on the hillsides planting, there, there already are some big trees that we're going to be planting shrubs and ground covers around. Uh, if we try to put some, some small trees in there and hope that they grow, they're not, they're, they're probably going to get choked out by a canopy of what's there. And there, I, I, so we can probably squeeze a couple more in and I can work with Mike and Todd and Dave to, to, to do that. Um, but they're going to be maybe more around the periphery or along maple, uh, where we can, uh, without affecting the overhead electric wires.
Well, I'm just speaking for myself. I think, you know, shade is a big deal. You know, it's a hot, that field gets very hot in the summertime. Like every other open field gets very hot around here. And, and thinking in terms of shade being generated in the morning onto that field would be nice. Um, so I don't know where those trees can go. I think if we're going to leave that white oak, that suggests to me that there's potentially room on the, I guess I'd call it the, um, the lawn side of the sidewalk perhaps to put in a, a tree or two. Just ask for that consideration. Did I think you had 20 or 30 years having some more shade is a good thing?
Yeah.
Right. And the rosebuds won't do it.
Yeah, we, we can probably stick one or two more in. Uh, you know, we're, we're trying to steer clear with the trees of the, the water and sewer lines. But we can probably, we can wiggle a couple in there probably. Yeah.
But that's, I'm just trying to express it. I, I see Irene's nodding her head. I can't see you, Joy. I don't know if you're agreeing or not.
Yes, also.
Okay. Richard. Okay. All right. So that's it. That's a consensus from us. They would like to see a few more canopy trees where you can find space for them.
Okay.
Um, can you tell us something about the height of the ground crop cover that's going to go toward East West Highway? And will that end up uh, blocking the sightlines to the traffic? That's, which is one of the things residents have said would be very desirable.
Uh, it, 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 yeah, it will be. I mean, everything that's selected there is not going to get more than a few feet tall. Now, also keep in mind it, we're planting it kind of on the lower side there. Um, you know, and then, uh, so the, the park is a little flat and then it kind of has that steep slope up to the sidewalk along East. These wouldn't get planted, you know, on that slope. Um, they're more kind of on the ground outside. This would have, you know, if we move the fence, obviously we'll, some of this will have to get adjusted. But, um, yeah, the idea was it's more on the, the, on the flatter part there. Some of it will grow up a little bit, but it's not going to be, you know, so it's so high that it's actually blocking uh, East West Highway, uh, you know, because as you head, uh, to the left on the page, um, if you're stopped at maple and, and, and looking to your left, um, you know, the road goes up pretty dramatically, uh, in the, the road itself. And so I, the idea is that we, we wouldn't be putting stuff in there that's going to eventually kind of get above this, you know, much above the sidewalk level. Cause we don't want to cause that problem.
Will it cause the problem of sightlines of the traffic?
Yeah. And, and while we, we will get some feedback, I'm sure from S H A about the plantings.
Mm-hmm.
And then you're saying that they'll want to keep- I think we've tried to select ones that they will, they will be tolerant of and allowed to be put in.
Can I keep jumping? I'm just going to point at the screen. So I guess you guys might not be able to see, but there is a consideration, um, that you need to maintain the lines of sight for people that are parked on maple. We have to look up East West Highway in order to make that right.
Ah.
We can actually put any tall plants that are in sort of this area, which is why you plant sort of are located where they are.
Thank you. Okay.
That, that's-
All the more different reason we need a light at that, um, area, but whatever.
One of the considerations about moving the fence out.
Yes.
If we can't really shift the screening lights and move the fence, might have the screen inside the fence to keep those plants.
That might not be good for, um, dog runs kind of thing. Cause they'll just go all over the plants. Yeah.
Well, let's first see if we can move the fence. I still think that's a good thing to do. But, okay, that's helpful. I appreciate that. We, we are constricted there. All right. Uh, yeah, I know we, some residents initially hoped there could be like a barrier of, you know, cypress trees or something.
Like it's just going to be a nicer view than what exists today. So it won't necessarily be like you won't see the cars. Of course you will still see the cars, but it'll be a prettier view.
That's, that's desirable. No, no, I, I, I'm not disapproving of the landscaping. I was just asking whether some of it could be higher. That's all. Uh, and the holly trees will be transplanted where?
There, um, there's a note, uh, so the, the triangles are the ones that are getting transplanted. And then, and then there's just a note- And then, and then there's just a note screening, planting, screening, planting area with transplanted hollies. I don't know if we have a symbol. It's just more of.
No, I think that's, that's.
Lo- located along that fence line.
That's great. I think, I think the holly trees are lovely. They're very pretty and they just.
No, no, I'm sorry. They are there. One, two, three, four, five. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's the, the five triangles show the ones that are getting transplanted in them. Um, and then the five of those are where, that's where they're going.
Oh, the black oak, you're moving, transplanting that. Okay. And that black oak, that really does interfere with this.
Yeah, I guess that one is also getting relocated.
And then, uh, Jason, in the last, well, zero minutes, um. Can you, we have, um, we're proposing as part of this landscape plan that we replace all of the Nandina, which is not native. Um, with, um, natives, uh, ground cover to stabilize the slopes where the existing Nandina. Are located, um. And, yeah, I don't know if the council can determine whether or not you want that to be the scope of us, of this project or to be considered at a later date. Um, I don't know if you have a cost estimate, Jason, for that, what that will be.
Uh, Todd, Todd, can you translate for me? What, what's, what, are we talking about the hostas?
No, Nandina is the, um, it's a berry producing, uh, green shrub, if you will, kind of upright shrub.
Yep. We, we, actually, we've talked about some of that in, in our land use committee as part of the stormwater stuff and we were. People were, were, the, the non, non-native didn't bother them. It's the invasives that bothered them. And, um. I, I like the Nandina just from looks, um, and if. If we don't have to move them, I would, I would leave them. That's my own personal opinion.
The Dennison group would love to get rid of those.
Yeah, well, they have, they have their garden on the other end of the park.
I mean, and, and, you know, just because I also, my. Something that's not, I mean, most of the plants that we have now. In this whole eastern, all over the United States are really non-native. They've come from someplace else over the last few hundred years. So, I mean, the, the, it, it. I, I, it's not a place to debate, debate it right now, but I, they're, they're perfectly acceptable. They're not invasive. They're pretty. I don't, I don't see why we would want to go to the expense of removing them.
Joy, I think that the climate environment group has also expressed, um, opinions about the Nandina. Is that right?
Um, not specifically to my recollection, um, they, they did support. Um, the planting of native species when the guard, uh, when Zimmerman was, you know, when, when it will be. Relandscaped, um, I mean, I, uh, you know, I can certainly go back to them, uh, for a clarification on that. I'm not sure is, is Lee Dennison entirely native?
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
Remember when we were talking about the other park that we were thinking about, Joy? And we had.
Was Rosemary Triangle?
Yeah, the Rosemary Triangle and. And that discussion also led me to believe that the, that committee, um, felt that the, it, it wasn't the issue of the non-natives. It was the invasive.
That's true.
What's, what's the difference in definition?
Invade, invasive will take over.
Ah, okay, right. Whereas non-native might just, just there and they, they grow. Okay, got it.
Is it worthwhile getting an estimate? Cost estimate for that?
Uh, I mean, we, we can indicate it, uh, as an alternate. On, on the, with the bid and then you'll, you'll at least have a value associated with it.
Very pretty. I'm, I'm happy with this. Wish I seen him. I like him. But I guess I have a broader tactical question here, which is. Let's assume, I guess you're going to find out if the fence can be moved, but I don't think there's anything else that's material from. These designs that we're talking about and also indicating some more canopy trees. I think those are the two points that we have. Uh, and enlarging that, uh, green to enlarge that oval at the end of Dennison to put in a bench. So three, three items. Assuming you address those. Um, how do we want to proceed? Uh, I guess we ought to see, find, know what you can do in regard, regard to the fence, but. Um, how do you want us to, how should we think of reapproaching the community and especially near residents to let them know these are the final plans and. Get any feedback or consultation? What, what are the thoughts?
Well, depending on when this all gets finalized, the, the, um, intent now today. Or as of a couple of days ago, is that the Dennison celebration dedication will be on May 13th. And there was discussion about, uh, because we weren't sure what the state of Zimmerman Park would be on May 13th. Uh, rain date, May 20th, um, that maybe there, there's an opportunity for folks that show up to, to have. Either, you know, kind of this kind of blow up schema. And by the way, this is what's happening on the other side of Zimmerman Park. So. We were thinking about that in terms of communication and hey, if it gets more people to the dedication, we can kind of just say. Come and learn about, you know, Zimmerman Park, the, the latest updates. That's one opportunity.
I like that. I think we also.
Was there a discussion of maybe posting like a big board that had a, you know, an open, like a, a copy of the plans?
Yeah, we could do that. We could just put a stake in the ground with a stapler of it and, uh, go from there and be, be there to. You know, I can be there to answer questions, um, uh, accordingly. So.
When, when is the, when do, uh, Jason, when do you need to sign off on? Especially the hardscape here so you can get going on the contract.
Uh, so right now, uh, we're in the process of submitting all the permits. So, uh, we'd like to at least get our first round of comments, uh, through the permitting agencies so that we know if they have any big ticket issues. Whether it be the fence or anything else. Um, and then we would kind of, you know, we have. Comments from the agencies, comments from Dave or Todd, and that we incorporate all of it and produce, uh, an issue for bid set. That we could, uh, you know, work with Todd and Dave to, um, and, uh, you know, on the procurement side.
Okay, when do you think, how long?
I think that's probably towards the end of February or first part of March.
Thank you. Okay. There you go. So. You would ideally look to finalize the hardscape at least. By March so that you can kick off soliciting the bids. Is that correct?
Uh, well, we, we'd want to pin everything down as much as we can, um. So you're not negotiating changes with the selected.
No, no, I get it. I, I, I'm looking for clarity. I'm not, I.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so I. Yeah, I, I, I think everything that we can finalize at that point, we would. Um, and then during the bidding proceedings, we would. Kind of finalize everything with all the permits and obtain the permits. And then we'd issue a, uh, an issue for a construction set, which would take into account any changes made between the bid set and the construction set to. Uh, obtain permits.
So what's the timing of that? When, when do you expect?
Uh, I guess I'd have to probably talk to, to, to Todd about what is, how long is the procurement process?
I guess where I'm heading on this, I think we probably need. You know, maybe once you settle these questions we're raising tonight, a town crier and put the, put it up on the website and make sure everybody sees it.
Yeah, give everyone a week. I don't anticipate any comments.
Sure, but I think we have to be very clear with people. I think we, we want to highlight some of the things, trees we're taking down like the, uh. Uh, sugar gum, not sugar gum, what is it called? It is a sugar gum, yeah. Uh, I don't want people to be surprised about a large tree coming down, which we're taking down largely for. Kids not falling on, on the thorns. Uh, so as a safety factor, but anyway, I just think we ought to be transparent about it, get these designs out there and. Ask for comments. And I think you're right, Irene. We probably won't get back many, but at least it gives everyone a chance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, good, good. And then I, I still agree that in May, you know, it'd be great to have further discussion, but. Clearly, you know, Jason wants to be able to get going in terms of.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's more informational than actually soliciting comments in May. Yeah, exactly.
And if ultimately we make some further changes in the landscaping, I presume we can do that. That's, that's a separate package anyway, isn't it?
Um, I, I think that would be part of the bid.
And part of the permits to S H A as well, correct, Jason?
We really. Certainly, anything that's in the S H A right of way, that's part of the S H A permit. That's not something that we'd be changing after the fact or else it would require.
Fair enough, but stuff that's in our land and, you know, our control.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you change it after the bid, it would just be a cost adjustment with the selected.
I'm, we don't have to worry too much about that. Okay.
So just to clarify, just to clarify, we're putting these plans out as informational only. We're not soliciting. I mean, if we, if we are going to incorporate more public comments, permits, permitting has to wait. Um, if hardscape is changed, that changes the equation for stormwater management. Uh, I think we need to be very clear that these are for informational purposes only because if we go through another set round of changes. We're going to be further delayed. Right, Jason?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, it's, it's fine if people want to comment about, uh, a species of. Shrub or something like that, that's, you know, as long as it's changed before we bid, it'd be fine. Um, but yeah, anything that's material to the layout, i- it would just set us back quite a bit.
I, I, I feel like if, if comments came in in the form of questions that frankly, there would be. There's a justification of why things were done, why, why certain trees are taken out, why, um, the placement of the, the walkway is. Where it is, uh, what's happening with the, the, um, other areas of, of this, uh, from an amenity standpoint or upgrading the rain garden. I, I think if people came back and said, you know, why is that happening? We would be able to justify.
Right.
This, so it's not going to be, why is this happening? It should change.
I think that's basically right. I think we have to be careful that we, it's, it's. It's a difficult position to put the council in to say, here's information, but by the way, no matter what you say, we're not going to, we're not going to listen to you. Uh, and I, I, I think we're probably on a pretty safe lane saying. You know, here's, here's the drawings that we're going to be planning to put out to bid, but. You know, please, you can solicit, you ask your questions and make your comments. Um, frankly, if someone raises a comment that's really outstanding and we all agree that something has to be changed, then we'd probably want to change it. I mean, I, I. We know there'd be a risk of delay, but that's what we would do. I think it's much more likely, as you say, Irene, that. Someone questions something, we would say, well, here's why we ended up where we've ended up and we still think it's the, the right thing to do. But I, I think we, 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 we can't really put things out and then say to the community that. This is just for your information, but. We're not going to listen, you know, we're not going to take into your, into account your comments. That's, that's a tough position to be in. I think we just have to ride that out.
Do we send out a town crier like? Monday with, with this?
It depends upon when Jason's going to have a revised, he's got to check on the fence, he's got to check with regulatory.
We ought to, we ought to run that.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, after all that runs.
Yeah, after, as soon as those things have been run to ground, then we'll go out.
Okay.
So it should, it'll be soon.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be tweaking the plans to, um, adjust the, the fencing and, and whatnot. I mean, it really adjusting the fence and, and moving the landscaping a little bit is all we really need to do at, at this juncture to address the comments from this evening.
Could you already enlarge the oval there for the fence?
Yeah, that's already enlarged. And then, uh, when we update the landscaping around the new fence location, we would also. Um, add in a one or two canopy trees.
Do I understand what, that what we don't want to do is. For them to submit the, the plans to the relevant regulatory agencies. And then have changes because that causes them to go back again. To the regulatory agencies because we've changed something, something. So where is that point in time? It's after you do your discussions, moving the fence and you draw up another set. You would then submit them to permitting and that's kind of the point of no return for us. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it's, it's the, the critical items are the limits of disturbance. Um, the items within the S H A right of way. You know, and, and any tree removals. So if we want to. I don't know, add a pet, another pet waste station, that's not going to affect a permit. If we want to, you know, move the sidewalk, then that would. Uh, I think it's, it's the, the level of change that you want to do after we submit for permit. Things that don't move the limits of disturbance or. Um, change stuff in the S H A right of way after we submit, uh, I think, you know, can be accommodated, but. Um, if, if we start moving the limits of disturbance, then we're kind of back to square one with the permitting.
I just, uh, my concern is this, is that we, we, we've had a lot of discussion and we, especially along Maple, uh. It's Maple there, right? Yeah, Maple.
Yeah.
Um, we've moved that out.
Yeah.
And. My guess is that some resident. Along somewhere, Leland or somebody is going to say, wait a minute, don't move that out that way. And. We can't, it, it, there's a point in time where if we do that and we, we've got to go back to the regulatory agencies. So we got to have some point where we say, no, you know, we, here's our justification for it. And thank you for your comment, but we, we can't, we, we aren't going to do that because we're, we're not going to. Want to extend that period of time where we don't get the park for another six months.
Right, I understand.
Right?
Well, I'm still trying to, let me just bear down one point here to make sure I understand, Jason. When. You, you, you're actually getting, you've already submitted these plans for comments from the agencies. Is that correct? For initial comments.
Uh, W S C has been submitted, S H A and D P S, uh, are probably going to go in at the end of this week.
Uh, okay.
And, and then, uh, park and planning was submitted.
All right. So, and then you're going to get initial comments, right? And then you're going to go, then you're going to make adjustments as they might require, and then you would go back in with the final plans. Is that correct?
That's, yep.
Okay, and that, and that's supposed to happen by. Early March. Am I understanding this properly?
The hope that, uh, they would do their initial review within 30 days.
Okay, so if we go out to residents with plans within a, a week and give them a week to comment. A, I think as Irene's put it, chances are we'll be fine. If someone says something that's fantastic, we all like it. It sounds like there's still a chance to make an adjustment before we get to March.
Unless it doesn't correspond with the comments back regulatory agencies and.
Oh, yeah, I, I got that. Well, that, then that's, then that goes back to Irene's other point. We'll have a conversation and say we can't make this accommodation. I, I just don't think we should be fearful of this and I don't, but I don't, I, I just. It's something we can do in a very short time and, and I think, uh, when you ask residents for comments. Um, yeah, you've got to consider them, that's all. I, I, I'm not, I'm not worried about the process. I think we've basically there. But I, I just, all I'm saying is a matter of almost the way we handle it, that. You, you can't say that, that you, you, no matter what your comment is, no matter how great it is. We're not going to take it into account because the, the ship has already sailed. That's what I'm saying. So we can do it in the next few weeks. I think we're okay.
That's where I was.
Right.
After, after the, the, uh, question is answered about the fencing, we send out.
Yeah, we, we get it right out.
Please get your comments within a week. And it, and it kind of coincides with waiting, hopefully waiting for the comments back from everybody else.
Anyway, then if we have a problem, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll be transparent about this. Yeah, okay. All right. Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. No, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Really appreciate it, Jason.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good evening.
Actually get something built in this town. Good.
We did. We had Dennis and garden be built.
That's true. That's true. Okay. Alrighty, I guess we ought to start our regular meeting, right?
Yes.
Following our town council meeting to order this day of February, and I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. We are a group of, uh, four council members tonight, uh, because, uh, Joel Rubin has come down with COVID. Uh, had hoped that he'd be able to participate virtually. But feel so badly that he's just taken to bed and will not be with us tonight. And that caused some change in our agenda and one of the items. Uh, but we'll certainly proceed with everything else that we're, we planned. Um, I'll start off asking Irene, our treasurer for the January. Um, I'll start off asking Irene, our treasurer, for the January report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so we are just starting February, obviously. Um, some good news to report here. So about up until this point, we've received about 64% of our expected operating revenue and spent about 48% of our budgeted operated expenses. On the revenue side, you may recall, um, in December, I talked about the November distribution where we affected, the town effectively takes that November distribution and through a spreadsheet that's been kind of formulated over the years determine what, um, the expected revenue is for the, uh, rest of the fiscal year. Um, at the time, the state had said that the distributions for November, you know, are, are uh, taking into account that there are some late filers and, you know, therefore other distributions in other months will be a bit, a little volatile. So sure enough, we were expecting per the November distribution, uh, a January distribution of $149,000, but we received 500,000, almost $500,000. And the state explained that in an accompanying letter that uh, a lot of areas that have high incomes, a lot of municipalities and other areas that have high incomes across the board, received a larger than expected January distribution. Um, takes, taking into account non-early payments, but now that personnel are returning back post-COVID to kind of check up on um, people and tax payments and whether they're kind of not delinquent but behind and, you know, all that's starting to get straightened out, therefore more revenue is coming in. Um, but there were a couple of interesting sentences in the letter that said, the result of all of these, you know, little changes that are happening is that less money is distributed in the November distribution and more in the January reconciling distribution so that um, uh, this explains a significant growth and that dollar amount in the January distribution. With current resources, counties should expect this pattern to be the new normal. Um, so to me, that means that we'll have to kind of adjust that spreadsheet that we've been using, um, uh, throughout this time to reflect the new normal. And obviously haven't had much time to, to kind of figure out the, uh, exactly how this is going to uh, be impacting us, but effectively it comes to a combined November, January distributions. We should kind of know what our fiscal year looks like, uh, in terms of revenue projection. So, um, the, there was a question about, okay, well, what does this mean in terms of our surplus? What does it look like right now? So a lot of the spreadsheet that we have says, you know, take the average of the last three years and that will be what you kind of should expect for January or March or April or whatever. Um, so our, while I, I don't exactly know what the rest of the distributions are going to, to look like um, for the rest of this fiscal year, it looks as though our prospective total revenue is now going to be 3.75 million dollars instead of the 3.4 million that we were expecting out of the November distribution. Our budget, um, for the, for the fiscal year is 3.18. So we expect that the surplus will be around $570,000.
Several hundred thousand more than we had thought it would be.
Several hundred thousand more. Um, on the expense side, because you saw that or heard that it was only 48% of budgeted expenses, obviously we haven't had as many snowstorms, ice storms can, you know, keep knocking on wood there. Um, which obviously impacts, you know, uh, budget, uh, you know, in a positive way. Uh, so, so far that, that's been great. And we haven't spent as much in terms of professional services or landscaping services. So um, that's kind of the differential there. So, um, I finally wanted to say I've met with Todd, our town manager, to discuss next year's proposed budget. Um, so we've gone over that and over the next weeks and months, we'll, as a council, go over our suggestions for that.
Okay, good. Thank you. Todd, is there anything to add to that? Well, good news. You're muted, Todd.
Sorry. Um, no, nothing else to add other than just to note that, um, you've seen the increase in our, uh, interest income on the general fund. Uh, in the second quarter of last year, we were generating about 0.1% interest and now in the second quarter of this year or FY23, we're generating about 3.2.
Yeah, we should be, right.
Interest income on, on that, um, account.
Thank you. Uh, should we take up the matter of the, um, revenue adjustment for, for the ARPA funds? Do you wish to do that this time?
Sure, I'll do that. Um, now, thank you. Um, as the council discussed and agreed to, uh, at its December meeting, uh, the town will expand its ARPA funds. The town council had previously agreed to take the standard allowance of the ARPA funds for the provision of government services. And as discussed, um, at the December meeting, procedurally discussed, December meeting, the council agreed to expand the ARPA funds in each fiscal year from FY23, the current fiscal year through FY26 for the provision of government services and to implement this um, and to ease the administration and use of the ARPA funds. Um, the council agreed to a schedule for these expenditures over the next, including this year for, for fiscal years. And, um, I'll, would like to ask council to approve an amendment for the FY23 budget to add a revenue line item for $700,000. And in subsequent fiscal years, I'll also add a revenue line item uh, until we have fully de fees that grant. I confirm with our auditor that this is the proper, uh, means to show the proposed expenditure of these funds in any fiscal year. Um, as the funds are currently in a liability account until they're spent. So we'll show them pulling, being pulled in in tranches, uh, over the next four fiscal years. Um, under a certain limit, which is $750,000, which triggers a single audit requirement. So they'll be pulled in at 700,000 over three fiscal years, and then the remainder will be de fees in the last fiscal year of '26. Um, each April, I'll report to the treasury that we've spent the money on obligations that equal 700,000. And we have the flexibility to decide in any given year what contracts or obligations are funded with grant monies. Ron and I have been having some discussions about contracts and whether they meet certain federal procurement guidelines, which they must in order to, um, to apply ARPA funds toward them. But essentially, when the council approved the standard allowance for the provision of government services, effectively or essentially any operating expenditure, as long as it's, uh, it meets the ARPA guidelines can be used to justify um, uh, the ARPA fund expenditure on those services or programs. Um, so in effect, I'm asking the council to approve, um, a $700,000 line item in the revenue budget for this fiscal year. And I will show that in successive fiscal years when you discuss and approve the budget in each of those out years.
Um, before we go further, I want to make a, a statement about this for the benefit of the, of our residents who are listening. Um, the, we should be clear, first of all, that we have now already received the ARPA money. Uh, it's cash in the bank. We already have it. Um, and what we're really talking about and the way I personally have looked at this is a means for us to gain flexibility in the use of the money and the timeframe over which we can use the money. Because by applying it this way to pay for government services, we will basically be augmenting our town reserves. And town reserves are completely in our control as to when and how we wish to use them. It does not change, and again, I'm just speaking personally as one council member here, but does not change my personal view that we should ultimately be finding means to use this money in how we actually spend it, even if it's drawn from our reserves for the underlying intended purposes of the ARPA money when it was granted. Um, and so where ultimately goes, because still, and I hope will be for infrastructure improvements, uh, and potentially associated with the parks development or some other things that we think are valuable in the area. Um, but what we're doing in the resolution that Todd is asking us to approve is really focused on easing the administration of how that money is handled. It is not actually dictating, um, the ultimate way in which that money is spent. And I just want to make that clarification for benefit of everybody who's listening. Uh, with that, is there any other, any comment or discussion about the resolution? Is there a, uh, would someone be willing to make it? So move second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Todd, and thank you, uh, Ron, for helping work that through. That's good. Okay, um, town managers' report.
Thanks. I'll, I'll briefly review, uh, staff activities over the last month. Uh, in addition to assisting with several major projects, including, uh, torso chippy chase rezoning and farm moments, market parks, development project, both of which will be discussed tonight. Uh, staff will also continue to manage Zimmerman Park redevelopment, which was discussed earlier this evening, as well as, uh, Coquelin Run improvements. Um, we also communicated with Montgomery County Department of Transportation regarding storm drain installation, which they had promised to alleviate certain drainage problems at the intersection of Oak Ridge and Thornapple and Maple and Thornapple, as well as their continued storm drain maintenance. Um, if you recall, they did the first phase of the maintenance pre-leaf collection season. And we asked them when they would be returning to complete, uh, the last phase of the cleaning and maintenance of the storm drains. They have, in fact, they are back in town uh, doing storm drain maintenance now, the last phase of it, which includes both cleaning and, and rebuilding of some of the, uh, storm drain inlets. And the, uh, with respect to the new storm drain installations at Oak Ridge and Thornapple and Maple and Thornapple, um, we've just recently heard the, through the drainage assistance request program, uh, they have two upcoming meetings, one internal to discuss their construction queue and one with our contractor to discuss crew availability. But, uh, they're going to contact us after these two upcoming meetings, probably within a week or two, to give us a general timeframe for the installation of those new inlets.
So they're going to expand the inlets at, at that Thornapple sump?
They're adding two new inlets at Thornapple, at, at Oak Ridge and Thornapple and at Maple and Thornapple to increase the capacity for water to be put into the system so as not to flood the road, hopefully as seriously as it was in the past.
Great.
Storms.
That's terrific. That's, that's very good news. Good. Thank you.
Uh, communicated, uh, based on some communications with residents, I, I've communicated with, um, the Maryland Transit Administration and its subsidiaries regarding, uh, some issues regarding retaining wall and noise wall heights along the Purple Line alignment adjacent to the town. We'll be discussing, um, the results of the, or what was discussed at least at the, at last night's community advisory team meeting for the Bethesda Chippy Chase, uh, area, Purple Line segment, um, later this evening. We scheduled a site survey of Rosemary Triangle to, in anticipation of possible improvements there, as was discussed and agreed or approved by the council at last month's meeting. Um, as Irene indicated, we met with her to discuss, um, the FY24 budget. We also met, uh, staff met with Irene to discuss town tree planting and protection policies. Um, staff has, uh, discussed and had, had some initial discussions and it's actually done some significant amount of research into, uh, options for the investment of town funds rather than in the Montgomery County Investment Pool. Uh, and more is to come on that. I won't go into too many details tonight, but I'll be having a conversation with Irene soon about how we present this information to the council so that it can be made as to what options are available and what's the best option. Um, we deployed mobile radar speedboard on West Avenue and John Lloyd sent, we actually um, took it out of dark mode and illuminated it. And, uh, I believe you, you should have received an email from John today giving you some initial data, collected data that shows the effectiveness, at least in the short term of that device. Um, we also prepared for the installation two new LED signs on westbound Stanford, uh, at East and on eastbound Leland at East. And John has also put in an order for the, for new LED stop signs that the council approved at last month's meeting as well.
Good.
Um, we are planning, John is planning to meet with our contractor and discuss the second phase of town office improvements. I won't get into the scope of those right now, but I will inform the council of those by email. We did approve the final design of the website. Um, and I, uh, was going to show you a screenshot of it, but I don't have it up right now and I'm not going to take the time to do it, but I will share that with you to, so you can see where we are in the process. But we've, um, we've approved the final redesign and it should be hopefully deployed, hopefully live within a month or so.
Hmm. Wow. Great. Good.
Our staff attended an NLC grant workshop. John attended that for, for, for me and also attended a county hazard mitigation plan meeting because the county's hazard mitigation plan is coming up for renewal and we're a part of that. We sign onto that um, for purposes of insurance and, and FEMA coverage, et cetera. Uh, and that's all I had to report this evening unless there are any questions.
Coquelin Run, what's the schedule for Coquelin Run's improvements?
Dave, you want to take that for me?
Yeah, I guess we submitted the joint permit application that we discussed, what, three weeks ago at the last meeting? Um, and we have not yet heard back. So it's just sort of pending that review and approval.
All right.
So.
So you'll be able to undertake that work this spring? That's still the goal?
That's the goal. Um, sort of depends on contract availability and just how quickly the Maryland Department of the Environment and the federal government get back to us on, with comments and if they require any modifications.
Okay. Um, and also, uh, we know that Trevor is, is moving on. Um, so we will need a new um, assistant at our front desk.
Oh, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Todd.
Sorry. Yes, we know that his, he's, Trevor is leaving. He's found another job. His last day will be February 17th. And I've made some outreach to some organizations and, and, um, organizations, for lack of a better characterization to find out, um, if there are opportunities rather than going the traditional route of advertising just through Indeed or it, or other avenues. I've, I've reached out to a, uh, organization called Handshake that is, um, a conglomeration of American universities, not American university, but Ameri, university across America. Uh, they have students, either graduates or postgraduate students or grad, or students who are about to graduate, um, looking for potential career opportunities. Um,
Good.
I've also reached out to wonders to determine whether or not there might be some working parents who are non-working parents who are taking care of children who want to work some, uh, in the town office. So I'm, I'm exploring some different avenues, um, suffice to say.
Great. Thank you for that. And thank you for the report. There's a lot going on in this town.
Yeah.
You didn't even bear down on some of the other issues in which we're spending a huge amount of time. So very busy indeed. Um, okay, with that, uh, public comments. Um, anyone who wishes to speak, this is your opportunity. I don't see any hands going up either virtual or real. So I assume everyone's in listening mode, but I just want to make sure if there's any comments, we have a chance to hear them. Okay. We'll now move to the, uh, variance hearing for tonight. Um, are the applicants here on the call?
I'm here.
Yes, they are. Uh, Kristin Gerlach is on the phone.
Could you please turn on your camera so we can see you?
Oh, I, I'm in Indonesia. I don't have very good internet.
All right.
Seriously. And I got in really late last night after 30 hours. So you don't want me on camera.
Well, actually, yes, that would be a nice thing, frankly, but if you don't, you can't, then we'll proceed anyway. Um, Ron, do you want to start us off going through the process? As always, it's always helpful.
Sure. The hearing will begin with a presentation of the case by the applicant. The applicant can please note that the council has had the opportunity to review your application in advance. So you don't need to restate everything in there, but please feel free to address what you'd like. Then the council will ask its questions. After that, anyone else participating in the meeting will have the opportunity to make comments or ask questions. Then the record will close. The council will deliberate and entertain a motion directing me to prepare a decision. Please note that if the request is granted, the decision's not final till it's reduced to writing. And that's a process that usually takes a week to two weeks. There is a staff report that's been entered into the record. And Dave, has, have there been any other comments from the neighborhood?
There have not been. There have not been. Uh, Ron, no.
All right. Thank you. So with that, Kristin Gerlach, you can please begin.
Uh, yeah, I think the application is pretty self-explanatory. I'm, I'm only trying to replace a retaining wall that was built about 13 years ago when I built the house that has rotted. because of the drainage problem between the backyards of Underwood Street and Thorn Apple Street. I was kind of interested to hear there's a drainage assistance program out there because the neighbors have been trying to get together for years to try to alleviate this problem, but there's basically a lot of standing water behind my house. So I'm not trying to change anything that's existing other than raising the height a little bit because my backyard's kind of falling into the Schipper's backyard behind me. And I don't think it's helping the drainage situation. So and it's for, there's a fence on top of the wall, and I'm not trying to go for any higher on the sort of combined area, but the wall has to be a little bit bigger because the ground under has gotten eroded away. So that's pretty much it. And I have talked to the neighbors, and they seem to be fine with it, or else they would have complained.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? Joy?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me turn it over to residents. Are there any questions or comments from any residents? Again, I don't see. Can you change the screen so we can see the? There we go, okay.
I don't see.
No comment. Okay, very good. All right, then I turn it back for discussion among my colleagues. Any comments, anything else that people wish to say?
I don't have any problem with this variance.
Okay. Do I hear a motion then?
I move we approve the variance.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Bye.
Hi. All right. So you now have your, you can go ahead and build the wall. Once it's reduced to writing.
Once it's in writing, yes, I listen to it. Thank you all very much. I really appreciate it.
Not only in writing, it's reduced to writing.
All right, yes, I will wait, and I thank you all very much.
Okay, you're very welcome.
All right, bye.
You were right on track again.
That's good. That's good. Okay, council discussions. A number of items that we'd like to review. I don't think any one of them should take too much time, but it's important to review them. The first one is the Corso Chevy Chase development. And I just want to enter again for everyone's information that the upcoming deadlines that we have to be aware of. The planning staff would like any further comments that the town may wish to offer by the 17th of February, sooner if possible, but the latest would be the 17th. The staff report will then be posted on the 27th, so they're basically, you know, they like to know if we have anything to say so they can reflect on that and potentially incorporate it in their own report. Then there will be the planning board hearing on March 9th. And we will be expected to testify at that hearing. And then there will be, after that hearing, the planning board will make its decision. But as I think we've all discussed and are aware, they don't really make a decision in this case. They are going to make a recommendation, which will then go to the hearing examiner. And the hearing examiner will be having her hearing on the 24th of March. And after that, it's really up to her to decide, you know, how long that, how much is needed for her to come to a decision. And ultimately then, when she's come to her decision, she will then pass it forward to the county council that takes the final vote. So that's the process. And also, just by way of clarity, the focus of this process that we're talking about regarding the zoning application really has to do with the, everything that we've seen in the application, binding elements and the basic design. There are a number of individual items which are referenced in the binding elements but are not complete and will be completed in the subsequent process of the site plan. A good example of that is the stormwater drainage. There's a binding element that says that the town will be involved with the stormwater management planning, but we don't yet know exactly what those plans are. But those plans will have to be finalized by the time that the site plan is reviewed by the planning board, which is again subsequent to the approval of the zoning application. So I just want to make sure there's a distinction there in terms of what we need to focus on in the upcoming process focused on the zoning. Anyway, with that, we've heard from the 4-H Committee, and we've had our public forum where we've heard comments from residents. So at this time, I'd welcome the thoughts of the council about how you feel generally about the issues in front of us in respect to the zoning decision and what guidance I should take back in terms of potentially working on some drafting of comments and ultimately testimony that we would be presenting. So I really just open the floor here for comments from my colleagues on how you feel about it.
I heard a lot of comments about traffic or just concerns about that. Overall, I felt like people were pleased in terms of where the, where the, what the design looks like at this point. Certainly, there's details to work out, but I heard a lot about real concerns about traffic and the idea that while it's good that there's a vehicle study going on that really to have us as a council or more discussions with Corso about that. So that came out to me loud and clear.
Yeah, is it appropriate? I guess, would it be appropriate for us to make the comment to the planning board staff that says, we, you know, we understand that the developer doesn't have to submit a I forgot, is it state required plan or whatever?
LAT, the local area traffic review?
Yeah, doesn't have to do that, but has committed to, I mean, just get it on record with them that says, you know, they have committed to do the traffic study that is very important to the residents.
Well, I think if we, if, one way to think about that perhaps is one of the conditions for our supporting this, if that's what we decide to do, is they're honoring that commitment that they made to us to do a comprehensive study.
Yeah, and to be clear about it is because there are retail establishments expected to be a part of this community, and the developer expectations that these retail establishments will attract people, not only just from the town, but also from other sections of Chevy Chase, that the traffic study is important to understand, you know, physical vehicular traffic, but we're also concerned about pedestrian safety in that traffic component. So it's the signalization type of stuff. So yes, SHA is, you know, it's tough to sometimes get quick action from some of those.
Only sometimes?
Only sometimes. But it is something that is resonating, you know, as there's lots of talk on the council about the greater urbanization of this area and the importance of getting people to utilize public transportation, to utilize their, you know, walking and biking to where they're at, but yet there's a disconnect sometimes with people feeling safe to walk in certain areas, and not in terms of like bodily safety, but just the relationship between pedestrian and bicyclists and vehicles. So that, that's the other part of this, you know, the study to warrant signalization so that it's also safer for pedestrians.
The only other thing I was, had thought about was that since our first respondents is back to the planning staff, it's actually, it would be an appropriate time for them to hear from us about what our continuing concerns during the site planning process would be.
Right.
Because this, you know, they're not, obviously wouldn't parrot those back to the planning board, but it's something we want to convey to them that we're going to be closely following and are concerned about during the site development process. So that's just, that was my.
Well, I think that includes traffic. It includes stormwater management.
Yes.
Lighting, parking. Because they also, they're promising a parking study, and that also is very important to us. I'm sorry.
Can I ask also, what is the, so once the county council votes on the final LMA, there is a site planning process. Who, like, what entities are involved in that? Is that just the developer in the community? Or is the, you know, are there, is there like a back and forth with the planning board on that?
Yes, the site plan is filed with the planning board. The site, so it's a site plan application, and it will be reviewed by the planning department as the staff to the planning board. And then the planning board will take the vote. So that does not go any further. The planning board has the ultimate authority in respect to approval of a site plan. But that's a very comprehensive look at all these things. But that's very much what the planning board is, that's their bread and butter work, is approving site plans.
So at the site plan stage, that would be where, so I guess I understand it is important for us to mention some of our concerns now, traffic, stormwater management and so forth, but really it would be at that stage where for us, the rubber really meets the road in terms of indicating specific concerns before the planning board, before they approve the site plan, right?
Correct. That's our understanding of it, yes. And right now, I don't, maybe, Todd, you may have some information, but I don't, on what will be, what's the timeframe in which they might be thinking of, the developers will be thinking of trying to to present a site plan. Imagine right now they're just focused on the next stage, you're getting the LMA through, but I don't know whether they hope to hit this calendar year for the site plan, but that's, you know, it takes months and months to prepare a careful site plan.
I can look back in some documents as you're continuing to discuss to see what they initially, I don't know how much their timeline has been delayed, not by a huge amount, but I can look at.
But I'd be very surprised if it was before the fall.
Oh, yeah, surprised.
And I think it's probably fall or winter.
And is it after the site plan that that's when there's, is it covenants, like, an agreement between the town and the developer? Like, when does that agreement occur? Or drawn up?
It's a good question. There are different parts to it.
Okay.
Some of that is embedded in the binding elements, so that, in fact, is approved with the LMA and well in advance of the site plan. Other aspects will be embedded with the work with the site plan. And to take one example, when it comes to trees in the forest conservation area, they're going to have to come to the town with their plan and ask for a variance, so that, I don't know the timing of when they plan to do that, but presumably they'll want to do that before the site plan, I would imagine, so that they can have clarity when they present the site plan about that. I'm speculating, but I, that, those have to be linked. But then there are other things which probably would come afterwards. And to take an example, the negotiation of the construction agreement to control noise and traffic and communications with residents during construction. I would imagine we'd probably take up after site plan because even after the site plan is approved, assuming that is, there's probably at least a year to pull all the permits before they can break ground. So there's still a long time in which we can work on the negotiation of that agreement. So I think it ends up being broken into different pieces as a result, but that's, I think, the rough lay of the land. Todd, do you want to comment? Is there something there that?
No, I think you have it right. I think that's exactly right. I think anything that we do with respect, you know, after site plan comes, after approval of site plans comes permitting. And, but I think what we have to, what we have regulatory authority over, they'll likely come to us before they finalize site plan because it'll impact the site plan that they're presenting and ultimately have approved by the planning board. But we will likely need to work with Bob to understand exactly the timing for all of these elements and when they're best. And so we'll have to, we'll have to circle.
I think, I think you're a good question, Irene, when we, the right point over the next few months, when we can set out this timeline, a timeline looking further ahead. If we come to the point of saying, okay, we're, let's say we're basically supportive, and we think this is when the decision for the the zoning amendment will be taken. If we, with the developer's help, if we can set out a timeline looking ahead over the next 24 months, I think that would be helpful to residents, and then within that, set out when we expect to negotiate and conclude different items. I think that would be, that'd be good for everybody to have on paper. It's a good thought.
And I did find out that after LMA is approved, which was plus 10 months after September 2021, but we know when it likely will be approved, after LMA is approved, it's 16 more months to complete site plan process.
16 more months?
Sorry, that's plus 10, plus six, excuse me, six.
Six more months, yeah, that sounds more like it. So if they had approval in April, say, from the county council, then it would be very end of this calendar year. That sounds about right for a site plan.
It's plus 16 from the start, so it's six after LMA approval.
Yeah, okay. All right. Other comments? So I guess I want to get a consensus here. We basically feel that the the changes they made in request to our very strong statement on the need to cut down the heights, is that basically something that we feel now they've adequately responded to? I guess that's the core question we have here.
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right. The one other thing I want to mention, the 4-H Committee did say that they also approved and thought that the developers had made very significant strides in these latest designs and felt very good about bringing down the heights. They did have a recommendation, as you may recall, that they felt that on the the wing of the building and the north
west.
west side, that the developers did do what we asked for by cutting out a floor, but the way they did it wasn't all that substantial. They basically lowered the roof line by something like six or seven feet and knocked out a few apartments that would otherwise have been sort of on what I would call the Mansard roof line, okay? And they asked the question, which is, they said, look, what you now have is, if you're on Thorn Apple and you're looking at the structure, you now have the wing that's closer to Connecticut, that's five stories, and the one that's next to the Harper residence that's four stories, it's a little asymmetric, and the height isn't very different. Do we consider whether we really think that it's important for them to keep the lower height that they've offered in this, in this latest version? So I wanted to please ventilate that thought. I don't know if people feel about that.
I think they felt there was more aesthetics. There wasn't any, you know, real benefit or they weren't critical of what they did. They just thought the aesthetics of it weren't. If they went back to the original, it would be fine, but I don't know whether we should go back to that, to the to them and say, hey.
Nor do we know how the nearby resident.
Right, right. We haven't heard.
They haven't provided any comment on it, so, which means that they'd like it or they didn't know that there, you know, that it really was not that much of a difference. So that, it might be helpful to understand what their thoughts are.
Well, I think they told, the last, if I'm correct, the people who own that property there didn't object to the original.
Yeah, but I think I what I've learned in this business over the years is if people don't say anything, they're usually okay with it, but if they're concerned, they'll speak up. But I want to make sure. Joy, do you have any thoughts about this?
I don't. I mean, I guess my only question would be is if we ask them to make a further change, what is that going to do to, I mean, it's like a whack-a-mole thing, right? Like, in terms of density, and so where, if they have to take out units at that point, where are they going to put units, and would that, you know, not be favorable to somebody else in another side of the property?
Just to be clear, I think what the 4-H Committee was thinking was maybe it was okay to let some units go back onto that corner.
Go to the original.
But I, I have to, Rich has raised something which I'm sort of in But I, I, I have to, I'm, I'm, Rich has raised something which I'm sort of in my mind, which is I think we've, we made a very important point here that we cared about that corner bringing down the height and they've done it somewhat. We may not be entirely happy, but they've done something. And I, I think when we pushed them to push down that height, we effectively were saying, we're okay with asymmetry. Because obviously we weren't asking them to push down the wing that's closer to Connecticut, so we knew that there'd be some asymmetry. So I think it's a little bit odd for us at this point to suddenly say, whoa, well, actually now we're concerned about asymmetry. I mean, I, I, I think this is one of those issues where it's, it's not compelling and it's better for us to just leave it and say thank you and move on, but that's, that's my view.
Okay, I agree.
Agree, no, okay. All right, well then, uh, with your permission, I, I will, uh, take a crack working with Todd and drafting up some comments along the lines of basically being in favor of this plan, but noting the issues that we will be monitoring carefully and things that are very important to us. I think we certainly want to cite the issues that all of you have mentioned. Uh, cite their agreement that they're, which, which they've, which, um, Grant has said to, to Todd, that they know they have to come to the town for, for a, uh, uh, variance for our tree ordinance. So we want to put that in our comments, so that's on the record is something which they have to comply with. Uh, and, um, I think it's, way to think about is that both these studies, the parking and the traffic are to us part and parcel of our, uh, support. I.e. if those studies are not done seriously, then that could, that can undermine our willingness to, to support their application. So to some degree, we're holding their feet to the fire to make sure the studies are done.
I, I don't know if it's not done seriously because, I mean, they've hired a professional firm, um, to, to do these studies. Now, we may quibble with the underlying methodology that, that this professional firm might be utilizing, but I feel that, uh, um, a sentiment along the lines of the, with the emphasis on urbanization should also be an emphasis on safety and utilizing old meth, old methodologies for, um, vehicular, um, numbers and, and, uh, you know, the allowance of, of, um, collisions and you, you know how they, if it's one collision per six months, it's not a big, you know what I mean? But if it gets up to five, then they start paying attention. We need to get down to that true, whether it's the county's Vision Zero program or the state's thought of, you know, how, how or increased urbanization, um, is, is impacting our area that that's the, I feel like that's more, I'm not making sense, but I feel like that's more of the sentiment versus you need to take that traffic analysis seriously because they are taking it seriously, it's just the, the company.
I think, I think I get the spirit of that, okay, thank you. And then I would presume that, that, uh, again, well, obviously, once it comes with a draft, we'll send it around, but that will then also become the basis of our testimony. There's no reason for our comments to be particularly different than our testimony. Okay, um, well, that's great, thank you. I, that's, this is a long process, but I think a lot of good progress. And, and again, appreciate all the work of the committee and appreciate the involvement of the residents. Uh, one of them is here tonight. And, uh, it's always nice to see someone in person. So with that, I move on to the farm women's market. And, um, the, the, uh, uh, there's not much to report in terms of contracts. Uh, the, um, uh, the county and the parks department are awaiting, the draft agreement from the developers in which they're going to set out the, uh, process for submitting invoices and being reimbursed. And the county and the parks department want to see that before they can come to us and say what the process is for us to put in our amount of money to them so that they can make those payments back to the developers. So, uh, we're sort of waiting for that step to take place. So we don't have any further progress yet on those contracts. Um, the, the, as we've said at our last meeting, we have been alerted that there are some substantial cost overruns on the utilities and we're looking to see how that can be cut back. Uh, we have, uh, told the developers, we want to see an estimate, uh, for what we could save if we do not, uh, underground the wires on 46th Street. They will ask their consultant to come up with that number. Um, the other thing they have already done though, is they've looked at what it would cost if we did underground the wires on 47th Street, uh, which would allow for a easier, uh, sighting of the, uh, surface Capitol Crescent Trail. Uh, and that number comes to 1.8 million dollars apparently from the numbers that we saw in the memo today. Um, and, um, we'll have to see, you know, whether that can be covered. But again, to be very clear, that's not part of the parks project, that's separate. But simply saying that undergrounding should all be done at once, so we should think about that issue separately. Um, and there's a thought of trying to, to, uh, obtain some additional state aid. Uh, maybe we can for that, the developers think they may be able to, we'll find out. Um, the, um, uh, I have spoken to Delegate Solomon and, and Todd has followed up with his chief of staff, Eden, about, uh, trying to clarify what the requirements would be for us to use, uh, the money, state money that's been allocated to the town. And all we have right now at the moment is, he's working on it, but he really is. The, it's not easy, uh, to sort out. He's been in touch with the Department of General Services and in particular, he's engaged a fellow named, um, um, Matt Geith, that, uh, Matt Klein, Matthew Klein, who is the counsel to the, uh, uh, the, the State Assembly, um, who focuses on all matters regarding capital budgeting. And, uh, so Matt Klein has now been engaged and is working with the Department of General Services to try to figure out exactly what the requirements are for us to be able to draw, uh, the half million that was appropriated last fiscal year. And by the way, we have heard that the half million that was pre-authorized last year is in the budget for FY24. So we should expect that pre-authorization to be turned into an appropriation. But we still have to know that the means or the channel that they've chosen to give us the money, this bonding program does have the flexibility to, for us to use the money without requiring a whole bunch of requirements, uh, on the project itself that would be onerous. So net is, our delegate, not our, but Delegate Solomon is taking it seriously, working with his counsel. We hope we'll hear shortly what the, um, what, what, what he says. There could still be the need for us to find a plan B if it turns out that using the money, this particular channel is too onerous.
But it sounds like since they've got the council to the committee, the appropriations committee involved in it for those capital projects, that if something did occur that between GSA and that needed legislative fix, you, they could probably roll it into the 24 budget process.
All those, those are, those are all good thoughts and, and, and options, we're just right now finding if we have to go that route. That's right. The other, the other one is that, that we can ask for waivers from the Department of, of Public, um, Public Works, um, Board, or Board of Public Works. Uh, and, and, but we have to know that the, the, that board has the authority to grant the waivers on the subjects that we would wish them to grant the waivers on, uh, and we don't know that yet. So there's still a lot of uncertainty about it, but we're working the traps. On the other hand, uh, with all that somewhat frustrating, uh, parks and the developers have made headway in terms of planning a charrette process. Uh, and, uh, Todd has been helpful in negotiating, not negotiating, in getting this, uh, agreement on timing and date. So it is now set for March 15th at 6:30 PM. Uh, and it will be in the social hall of the Lawton Center there instead of the town hall here because, um, what they envision is a general presentation, but then a series of separate tables where residents can go and talk about specific issues, uh, and we need more space to handle that. Um, it is not a, they very much agree that they wanted a charrette meeting in the town, but it is not open only to town residents, it is a general public meeting. By the same token, there's going to be a meeting the next night, the 16th at BCC, which is going to be open to everybody and also including town residents too. So they, they can go, you know, we can't get to one and get to the other. But in any event, this is where they will be presenting a concept and they feel strongly. And I think Irene, you've been on these calls, you agree with me that, that it's, it's important that residents see some, something, not just a blank piece of paper saying, what do you want? There's got to be something residents can react to. So that's what is currently being cooked up and what will be presented and which residents can then respond to. And then there's going to be a 30-day period after that, uh, where they'll be collecting online comments. So no one has to sign off and say anything definitive that night. So anyway, we're all very pleased that this is real concrete headway in terms of real soliciting community input. And I think we're all going to feel better when we feel like we know and have a much better idea of what truly will be the features uh, on this, on these two parks and how they'll integrate with Elm Street Park. Uh, after all, that's really what we care about and so seeing headway on that, I think is, is great.
Great.
Um, Irene, you've been on these calls, is there anything else that we need to?
You've covered it all, thank you.
Todd, is there anything else that we need to mention here?
Uh, no, nothing else, Barney, I can't think of anything else that he covered at all.
Okay. Purple line update. Let's see, Todd, I, oh, who was on the call? Irene was, okay. Irene, why don't you report on the purple?
Well, uh, so the, um, uh, MTA holds these various, uh, meetings, community, uh, meetings, uh, with communities that are kind of all along the, the purple line route, uh, every so often. And, um, through, we, we have reached out to town residents in advance and let people know the, the questions that we were asking. Not, I, I think just, was it just the residents that were living along?
Thirty-six residents.
That, that they're most impacted. Um, and we submitted, I think, a total of six, maybe seven questions at the end, ranging from, uh, you know, the, the noise wall and, and, uh, what, when that would be constructed to just the, the ambient noise that occurs, uh, while construction is, is taking place. All the way through, there's been tremendous cost overruns and, um, what, what that critical path looks like, uh, going forward so that we're not constantly facing this, you know, we're, we're seven months behind and it's $7 million more over budget kind of things. We, we wanted to get a better handle. Um, I would say that I would characterize last night's meeting as, um, uh, an effort to be able to say, uh, for MTA to be able to say, we've received your questions. Um, but I don't necessarily think that we got this level of specificity on the answers that we were looking for. Um, in terms of, you know, what is that process going to look like? How are we assuring along the way? What are the checkpoints? So that, um, if there are cost overruns, we know them earlier rather than later. And if there are timeline extensions, we know them earlier rather than later. Uh, we asked a question, for example, since there's an additional, um, uh, at least seven months delay, could the Capitol Crescent Trail open that had been closed down so people can bike and walk through? And, and citing safety issues, they, um, basically kind of said, no. So, um, I'm not really sure I got a lot of information out of last night's meeting.
One question that we were asked, we, we did ask on behalf of residents is could they turn off the,
Yes.
The backup noise alarms and the answer was no, they cannot turn those off because that's state law. I guess it is, I mean, you know, but, but anyway, that was actually a noise complaint, so we're going to have to let residents know that. We also want to distribute the slide deck, uh, for, of Westworth. And, and Todd, do you have a, will you be able to get that in the next day or two?
Yeah, I'll try to do that.
Okay, because we'd like to send that around to the residents, we ought to, we ought to post it on our web, on our, in, in our, um, our, our, uh, website.
Did they give you any, any indication about the construction of the noise wall along the town, about when that would be?
Well, it's a good, very good, here, here's, here's how they like to answer questions. So the slide says upcoming work.
Okay.
Construction of the noise wall. One might, one might observe that upcoming is quite broad. It could mean tomorrow, it could mean next year, it could mean 2026. However, in subsequent questions, uh, because this is one of the questions we asked, which they had not answered. We wanted to know what they were going to do in the next six months. What we were told in response was, well, actually, when they said upcoming, they really meant upcoming in the next six months. So then I said, oh, you're going to finish the noise walls in the next, oh, no, 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 no. Uh, they, that was, that was, anyway. So I think we can anticipate that they will begin construction. And they have, of course, you do know the posts are there.
Yeah.
But they're actually, I mean, putting in the panels will happen.
Yeah, I, it's, it, I, I think that would be, if I was living along there.
You'd like that done sooner.
I would like that done sooner, right.
And that could also help mitigate the noise of the construction behind the walls.
Yeah, what I found interesting, uh, what I got out of the conversation is that each section of the line is managed by a different person. And I, I guess, I'm going back to my days as a project manager. I, I always thought it would be your job if, is, is, is laying down the track or, or putting it, you know, a stormwater man along the entire line.
Oh, I see, no.
And, and it's not, meaning you've got, you've got one responsibility to make sure that that is carried through appropriately throughout the, the.
Have an integrating contractor that does that. That takes all those little pieces and, and puts them together. I mean, we, we were really, it was one of the things when we first met with the state and the prior group, um, we, we were concerned about that, that as well. You know, that, how do you, how do you integrate this stuff along this thing? And they, they've got a process for that, but, you know, that they, they've got a process for it, that's all I can say.
Yeah, yeah, so.
When, when, when I, I'd like to ask, uh, council, I hope you, permission for us to, to weigh in on this. Uh, there is a, we all seen the Sleaford Tunnel, but we hope we'll, we'll have been to better signalization. On the far side of that tunnel, from, from where we are, uh, there's a staircase that goes, will go right up to the, to the, to the, to the Capitol Crescent Trail. Uh, and that actually will be very convenient potentially for residents living on the, uh, you know, closer to Connecticut Avenue in the town. If they wanted to get onto that trail and go towards Silver Spring, that's probably a route they would wish. So, um, one of the questions that was asked was, will there be any kind of way for, for people to get their bicycles up there? And they were, and the answer was no.
No.
Well, what everyone has, and there, there was a lot of chat box discussion about this last night. What we've all seen in any number of places we've visited, and you were recently in Amsterdam and you know how this is done. You put a little gutter on the side and you're, you put your bicycle in the gutter and you walked up the stairs and the bicycle is easily transported that way, right, you'd push it, you know? It's not difficult, but instead of saying, of course, they would do something like that, the answer was no, it's not in the plans, it's not in drawings. It's just so, it was so, yeah. So with, with, if you guys concur, I would like to get in touch with East Bethesda and indicate our support to put in some joint effort to try to at least get the design changed so that a, is it called a bike gutter? Is that the right, whatever it's called?
Already on the, the trail.
Yes. Heck, you could just put a rubber strip.
Anyway, I, I hope I have consensus to pursue, thank you, okay.
Yes, please.
All right, okay, anyway, that's the purple line. Capitol Crail, uh, Capitol Crescent Trail Tunnel.
Tunnel, other than, than the price going up?
No, I think, I think here's, here's the issue. We, we do know that Andrew Friedson, our, uh, county council member feels strongly that the county should still get this done. If, any of his representation is that this was a very, a major commitment made by the county at the time that they, uh, the county approved the purple line and a new Capitol Crescent Trail. And the specific question was, will there be a tunnel under Wisconsin, uh, that, that the trail will be able to, to use? And the answer was yes, the county will build it. And, um, uh, the, we are on record as a town, as Joel pointed out in our last meeting, that we've supported this. Um, the thought that, um, I, I wondered raised is whether we could say something to the effect that in principle or in concept, we still support the trail, but we recognize that given the cost increase, there has to be a means of finding funding that goes outside the county, that this isn't, this is no longer something that the county itself is able to afford. Uh, and Todd, do you want to speak? You said there's a grant application, in fact.
Raise, yeah, it's a raise grant.
Do you want to speak to that?
Uh, yeah, I'm happy to. So they, the county reached out about a year ago, um, initially and saying that they were applying for federal funding, um, for, uh, kind of shoring up the, um, the, the funds for the Capitol Crescent Tunnel. This was a previous budget estimate of the, of the Capitol Crescent Tunnel. The, the, we as a town wrote a letter in support of, uh, the tunnel at the time, um, explaining that's, it's very. Explaining that's, it's various safety, environmental, and even business benefits. The application was turned in and and in effect, the federal government. I'm not sure denying is too strong of a word. They came back and said, here's some ways to improve the application. So here we are a year later. And they've come back with an increased estimate of of, or the latest estimate for the tunnel. And indicating something like. Out of the sixty nine million, twenty four million would be local, locally funded, which is unclear what. Where those local funds are coming from necessarily, but I digress. The rest of it would be covered by the federal government and. They've asked us for another letter of support, which effectively would be the same letter that we wrote before, but with a different date. They're very much accepting if we just put a different date signed and off. But.
A letter of support of the tunnel provided that it gets.
Funded by, through, through raise, yeah, through the raise funding. So, so, yeah, so as we all talked about last month, where, you know. Should we start to come to reality that? You know, the sixty nine million dollars, seventy, seventy five, eighty million, there are ways. That same money could be spent in in the county that might be. A little bit more effective at this time. And so as a town, should we still support that? Should we still support Andrew Friedson as we're? As he wants to put it back in in here? And is the writing of this letter? Making it a tacit support as well? But I I like your clarification, Barney, where it's like, if the federal government wants to support this. That's, that's okay, but we feel still as a town, which doesn't need to be necessarily in the letter, but as a town. To say that it would be just a county funded effort, maybe with some state funding. I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that that's the appropriate way of using it. So we're kind of. Want to discuss that. Did I skip anything, Todd?
There's, there's both, right. The Friedson interest in potentially, whether we write a letter to the county councils. Asking them to, you know, try to reinstate the funding in the CIP and the capital budget or. Or alternatively, or or simultaneously writing a letter in support of the raise grant.
Yeah, there's a, there's a distinction that can be made, which is you support. The, the grant application that the county has put in. Is is different than supporting, I mean, it's the tunnel itself. Yeah, you, we could, I don't see why we couldn't support the county's. Submission of the grant. You know, to the federal, grant proposal to the federal government. It doesn't, I mean, if you wanted to put some words in, in the letter that says, you know. You know, if 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 the federal funds aren't coming, then we don't support it. I don't think you need to do that.
Probably don't need to do that.
No, you don't. So I, I think the issue of just supporting the county. On its grant proposal to the federal government is, be okay, yeah, pretty straightforward.
Okay.
All right, I'll tell you that. And that's all we have to do.
Yeah.
That's it.
I wouldn't do anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That gives us, I think, flexibility.
It does, yeah, to still have the conversations.
Okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Leave that with you to work.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, good. Radar speedboard.
Dave, you want to take this or I can? Either way. Dave, if you're comfortable, I can, it doesn't matter.
He said for you to take it.
Go for it, Todd.
All right. The staff developed this policy to guide the town's. Determination of or processing of requests. From residents or other groups to both request radar speedboards and LED stop signs. We had a radar speedboard policy in place, but now since we're deploying LED stop signs, we thought we would combine the two policies and clarify it a little bit and. And streamline the process. Do you have the policy in front of you or should I display it?
I think we've all read it, so.
Yeah.
Basically, the major provisions are requests can come from petition by residents or. Requests adjacent to public facilities by officials in those facilities or council directed requests. A feasibility analysis would be done by staff. Counsel could either decide not to proceed with further consideration of the request based on. Factors in the feasibility analysis or or tentatively approve the installation of the device pending public notification. Once public notion, public notification is provided. There would be a public hearing. And following that hearing, the council will make a final decision as to the placement of either the speedboard or the LED stop sign. There are also, is a process in this policy for requests to removal of the devices. And includes counsel consideration. Based on petitions by the same parties that I just noted, either residents or officials of adjacent facilities or council directed. There would be council consideration, and you could decide not to proceed with further consideration of the removal request. Or tentatively approve the removal pending public notification, which would then ensue followed by a public hearing. At which time the council will determine whether or not to remove the device. That is the policy in a nutshell.
Yeah, but the distinction here is, is that once the. Once you do the feasibility, turn it over to the council and we tentatively approve. You make the public notification, you don't have a public hearing, you make the public notification. If there are no objections received, then we go ahead. If there are, then we do a public hearing.
Correct.
Right?
That's correct. Yeah, thanks for that clarification, Rich. I appreciate that. That is, that is absolutely correct.
That was what, that was what you were most concerned with, which is we didn't automatically have a public hearing if it wasn't controversial, let's just go ahead and do it.
Yeah. If we don't receive any written objection, the town will proceed with the installation of the device, but if written objection. Of the approval is received, the the town will schedule a public hearing. Correct. Thanks.
So so if someone doesn't care about safety, they can, they can speak.
Good clarifying point. Thank you.
All right, good. Thank you. So do we, do we have to have a vote on this? This is for this policy?
Yeah, I believe we do.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt this policy as noted.
Okay, thank you, Irene. Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Okay. We will, we'll. We'll postpone the discussion of the anti-Semitism statement. But I will say for the record and for, for anyone listening, this is something which Joel Rubin has been working on. The council members have seen and have commented on it. But we'll postpone consideration until Joel is better. But the spirit of this, just very quickly, is that we've all taken note of the. Strong statements made by the county executive and the county council. Demonstrating abhorrence of the episodes of anti-Semitism that have now been seen many times in in the county. And also generally strongly opposed, of course, to any hate. Sentiment of hate expressed in activities. One of the parts of the county resolution called for collaboration and work with the municipalities. So what we'd like to do as a town is pick up on that. And have our own statement of condemnation of these activities. But also find ways to collaborate with other municipalities so that there's a collectively a. An engagement at our level of government, not just at the county level. To think about these issues and how we can have some action items regarding it. And also caring about how these episodes and how anti-Semitism and hate is discussed and worked in schools. So that's the general spirit of it. Just leave it at that, but we'll be taking that up when Joel is better and 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 working that further. Very quickly, a couple of final items. One is the testimony on the bill regarding. Municipal light, you want to take that up, Irene?
Yeah, so last year. John Lloyd, Todd and I attended a number of online discussions regarding. The ability for municipalities to purchase streetlights. And it's, it's quite a voluminous process. It's, it. It, it, they were, there was a lot of angst by municipalities that were trying to figure out the exact costs associated with. The purchase of these streetlights. In the meantime. There is a House Bill, I'm sorry, Maryland House Bill and Delegate Aaron Kaufman reached out to. Barney asking for support on this particular bill, which effectively. Allows a better, better stated process for municipalities to. Explore the purchase of their, of their streetlights. So it's the Bill ten eighty three, the, the. County and municipal street lighting investment act. As a result of attending these discussions and talking about. Kind of the impact for the town, our town. You know, one thing I just want to bring out is. On a monthly basis, we're paying less than five thousand dollars for electricity for all the streetlights. And to put in an application for taking, having Pepco. Analyze one utility pole. You know, they bring their buck, costs five thousand dollars. And that is just the application. That has nothing to do with the actual purchase that takes place and all the different. This is something where my recommendation is, is for us not to pursue this at this time. We don't necessarily need to be the early adopters. I understand that the village of Chevy Chase is actively pursuing. Purchasing their streetlights. We could certainly learn from, from as they go through their process, but for now, I don't think it's something that we necessarily, but we can still. Support it so that our fellow municipalities.
This legislation.
We could support it, but we wouldn't, that does not implicitly mean that we are looking to actively purchase our streetlights.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, we could support it. The, the other issue that I remember was that the Pepco had actually submitted a new tariff. I think it was last year on, on the issue. It was still before the Public Service Commission. And one of, you know, the, one of the concerns. They, the PSC had originally turned their application down. And then Pepco resubmitted it. And it was supposed to have clarified, made it a simpler process for the, the towns to. You know, to apply for these and and to not. Be burdened with the excessive charges for things like coming out and surveying the pole. And they were supposed, I thought that was before the PSC. There, and there was a lot of legislation, or a lot of people were concerned and they were proposing legislation. But they kind of stopped because PSC hadn't finalized. The, the tariff.
Tariff, yeah.
So, and, and, yeah, and. It may be all moot for us anyhow, because we only spend five thousand dollars a month. It may be just ridiculous for us to do any of the retrofit. At some point in the future, Pepco will be required to do those kinds of. Things probably, even if they didn't want to do them, you know, they'd probably have to be.
You know, at, at the end of the day, the, the, from a town's perspective, all we want is the ability to have LED.
Right.
And. You know, been waiting ten years for Pepco to do this. One thing that is, that Pepco let us know, or their, their representative let us know late last year was that this spring. They're going to resubmit their application to the PSC. So that the installation of LED light bulbs can take place, right? And this is the second time they've submitted it. The first time, they wanted to also install some smart meters, which the PSC was concerned about, like privacy and all of that. That's been shaved off from the application, so it's kind of clean where, you know, give us the ability to install. That's ultimately the only thing that we're, and frankly, what the rest of the, as, from what I heard in attending these meetings. That's what they're trying to, to, you know, you know.
I mean, that was always the discussion. It was achieved, how much cheaper was it to put an LED in for us to pay?
Yeah.
And if they're gonna do it.
Then.
It's moot.
Correct. At least for us.
You, you understand why the utility doesn't want to.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe because they sell less, less electricity.
Yeah, that's right.
So they will sell less electricity. So no, no company likes to undertake investments or programs that reduce their revenue. And so that's, that's, so what the real, the real contention is that they're saying, yes, of course, we're happy to put in LED bulbs. But now we want to jack up our electricity rate so our revenue doesn't decline. And that, of course, bothers a lot of us who feel, wait a minute. We're consuming less electricity. Our spending should go down, not stay the same. So that's, that is, that's the tussle that's going on in front of the Public Services Committee at the moment. But in any event, that is that we should go ahead and support this?
Yes.
Because you just have to update the.
Update the same, I think it was a couple paragraphs.
Okay, and we can send it in. And so that's what I should get back to Delegate Kaufman.
Delegate Kaufman.
Very good. That's the consensus? That's great. Then finally, and I really bring.
Joy, I don't know if you're, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay with that, Joy?
Okay.
Yes, fine.
And finally, I, I want to bring it, the Long Range Planning Committee met on January twenty seventh. And wrote a memo to the council. And I think this is a matter of governance. It's important for us as a council to make sure that we. Give proper consideration to what any committee comes to us and and recommends. They, they raised three points. One is that, and I'll carry this tonight because Joel's not here. That we should, they, the committee would like us to push for the tunnel, the Capitol Crescent Trail Tunnel. We've already discussed it. I think we're prepared to push for the grant and let it go at that at the moment. The second is that. The committee recommends that the town council write a letter to the Parks Department. Advocating for a meeting to discuss the Little Falls Parkway Linear Park. Somerset, Kenwood and Edgemore do not support the park, and we agree with their points. And they, of course, plan these communities to support the farm women's market, so we should endeavor for some mutual support here. I do want to report to the council that I, that I followed up. I've spoken to Steve. Circo, who is the president of the Somerset Town Council. As you may know, in Somerset, they've got. A mayor who's elected separately, but he's not on the council. They're smaller than us. They have even a more complicated government. It's, it's quite remarkable. And, and, but, but Steve is the president of the council. And, and his report to me was that, first of all, they have done a survey of their residents and the residents are very divided. And it's not, it's not at all clear, they're all opposed to it. And the council of Somerset therefore has not taken any view. So I, I gave me some pause on this issue. And also, the, in regard to the point of, of having a meeting with the Parks Department reaching out. There is a meeting scheduled, I think, is taking place on February fifteenth. And the Parks Department will be presenting their, their information about traffic. Which is the main issue is how much traffic there is in Little Falls. And if you diet down the lanes, will that traffic spill into the adjacent streets? That's really the issue that they have. So I, my sense is that I'm, I'm, I'd be wary of our jumping into this without feeling we've done our own. Involvement. And if we sense that among the communities, there's ambivalence, some for, some against. It's not clear to me that we, as a town, not immediately adjacent. Should weigh in, and especially since. There is in fact a meeting with the Parks Department. I mean, if there was no meeting scheduled. I would feel more comfortable at least saying, hey, look, Parks Department, you want to meet with these residents, that's important. That's a matter of principle to. Engage with the local communities. But if they actually are now having a meeting, it's, I'm hard pressed to see what there is for us to say. So. I, I want to open it for discussion, but I guess I've expressed my, my personal view about it.
No, I, I, I saw them, there was a meeting scheduled for that discussion with Parks and. After this, after the, the letter came to us, and I, I agree, I, I think we need to let. The, the data be presented to the residents. To the communities and and then see what happens after that. And I certainly wouldn't suggest we get involved in it if those communities don't. Support it. I mean, if, if they're. If they're fine with leaving that, that, those barriers in place, I don't think that we have enough, it's not enough of an impact for us. That we should go against their desires.
Is this a Norwood Park kind of situation?
Well, this is the other thing that's a little bit odd about it, or at least gives me pause. We generally like parks. That's what we've been advocating for is more parks. And so what these communities are, are saying, as has been represented. By one person to the Long, to the Long Range Plan Committee. Is that they do not want the dieting. To be put in place. They want. Little Falls to remain two lanes. And they don't care about creating a linear park. They just do not have it. So essentially, in saying they don't have the dieting, they are standing in opposition to creating additional parkland. So that is also a issue which makes me feel rather. Odd, because our position consistently has been that Bethesda area generally. because our position consistently has been that Bethesda area generally doesn't have enough parkland and needs more. I would think we better have a very compelling case to go to the Parks Department and say, well, here's an example where we don't want more parkland. In fact, we're opposing it. And that, that, that's a real change in our.
Diet that's, the catalyst, the, the road lane diet, that's the catalyst for this issue.
Yes, exactly.
It's not.
Their, their concern is like ours would be if, if, if there's a lot of cut through traffic because the back, traffic's packing up because of the
Yeah.
shortening the things, it's all going to come through their, well, my position would be they need to take mitigation actions against people cutting through then, you know. But don't, don't not allow a new park to be created.
Yeah, this is.
No, that's, that's part of what's difficult is to say we should, we should take a position in opposition essentially to creating a new park.
I feel it's a little bit different from how we asked for support for the Farm Women's Market Park because we were front, fronting a lot of money and, and there was no, I, I'm not sure there was like controversy. The controversy was say at the county level that would have rather used the land to put up more housing, right? But it wasn't controversial within the neighborhoods themselves. So.
Right.
But anyway.
Okay. Then the third issue was that they felt that we should weigh in on the process for the selection of the new planning board members. And I wrote an email to everybody about this. Any further reflections on that?
I don't, I, first of all, I don't think the, our, our, our opinion one way or the other is going to make much difference. So I don't know whether I would spend a lot of time worrying about.
Unless, unless it actually was negative.
That's right.
We would.
Yeah.
I, I do think there, and I've discussed this with you. I, I feel as if the, there needs to be a little bit more balanced support geographically on the planning board. There's been a lot of emphasis on the eastern part of the county in terms of the makeup of the plan, previous planning board. So my request would be to just have a, if we were to put something in, it would be a letter that expresses diversity in all, in all types, not just in terms of political affiliation, you know, education and, you know, kind of experience, but also geographic residents within the county. Because we're, they, they're, they're going to be undertaking of very quickly this new board, the zoning discussions again. And I, I prefer that there be a little bit more of an understanding of just what is really happening to our community. That is to say Bethesda and, and all the development that's been occurring.
That's not what they're, I mean, this was.
That's the planning board to, to.
Well, but it's, it, it would be the way we might, without, what the committee specifically asked for was for us to, to, to find specific candidates and endorse them.
Right.
And, and, and I think, I heard Irene be negative about that.
Yes.
Yeah.
What you're saying is if we do anything.
Yes.
It should just be a general statement of looking for geographic diversity.
Yes. Th, th, this was, in particular, it was about a current filling of vacancy.
Oh, yeah.
But it's all, all of them are going through, I mean, they're, they're rolling in everybody. It's three, three people down and two people right behind.
Right. It'll be all five members in due course.
New.
Yeah.
Yeah. This particular one was just for the endorsement of this one candidate.
I don't think, I think, I think the request was for us to be engaged in the process of endorsing candidates for all five positions.
Oh, okay. All right. But I, well.
But I think, and Joy, do you have any? I'll make sure I get your thoughts.
And yeah, I, I do not agree that we should be endorsing individual candidates. It just might create a conflict of interest at some point.
Yeah, that's a fair point. And I, I feel that too. And I, I also look, you know, they're interviewing these people personally. We're not. I mean, I, I don't think we even have the standing to.
And the interviews are public, unlike previous cycles.
Right.
So, yeah, yeah.
I, I do want to raise one, one other thought, which is perhaps in the same vein as yours, Irene, about geographic diversity, which is, and I've mentioned this to, to a few of you, the chair of the planning board makes $228,000 overseas, both the Parks Department and the Planning Department. The other four members of the planning board make $30,000. And that is just such a disparate amount of money that the, the signal that I think that sends is if you're just a regular member of the planning board, you're only expected to spend, you know, half a day a week showing up and, and, and vote, and raising your hand and voting yes. I mean, and, and yet for all of us who've been engaged in this process, we know how much time is really, should be spent to be a good member of that planning board. It's, it's, if it's not a full-time job, it is more than a half-time job. I mean, really, truly, that in terms of bearing down on the applications, the complexity of the issues, reading everything, deliberation is, and, and I think the, the pay scale is set up to invite, you know, the chair to kind of set the agenda, roll everything through and everyone else just to raise their hand. And I guess what I wanted to ask is whether we should at least ask as a consideration to the county council that they readjust the salaries and basically raise the ones of the other four so that we, we are communicating the importance of this role and, and of the time commitment that we expect the other members to, to take on. And I'd want to see if that's something that would be okay to, to suggest.
Well, I, I was curious, I was very, after you brought it up, I was very curious and I'm, I'm, I would, I, I don't understand the, I would, I would like to understand their compensate, that, that compensation of how each of the members gets compensated. I'm not, I wasn't, I was thinking about, this is part, they're actually part of the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission. So maybe there's some other, you know, other than the salary from the county of 30,000, whatever it was.
Oh, I see.
There may be some other contribute, there may be some other, I just didn't know.
I don't think there is.
I don't know.
But it's a fair question. We, Todd can easily find out.
I just didn't know what the.
But assume, but assume for the moment that there's not, that there really is that differential. You think, you think we should try to suggest that we close?
Well, I, I'm, I guess my, my thought is, is that the concern about not being, you know, the, the chairman having so much of a say, as is the case in some commissions like that, where the commission has, is, actually has the, all the staff.
Right.
Report to him. And so everything that gets put forth to the board is stuff that's been produced by the chairman or the, you know, the chairman and, and so the concern would be, well, if that's the case, are these people, you know, is it, who's going to raise their hand? Well, I think the re, the, one of the things of the diversity of the, the party structure of it is, is that you, you know, that in itself gives somebody the wherewithal to raise their hand if they object, if they're the opposite party and they don't agree philosophically, whatever it is, which is tend, tends to me to kind of not bother me about people being concerned about raising their hand. But I, I just, I just don't know enough about this, the, how they get compensated. And I'm not sure about what their, what their real role is in terms of their, you know, their actual, what, what they actually are required to do on the board. Other, you know, they, they've certainly made just, I, I'm just not clear about all of that, the bigger picture about what they, what the differences between the responsibilities of the chairman and what the responsibilities of the member are, is. So, you know, it may be that the guy, the chairman has to, has to manage, the staff has to do all the other work and he's, you know, he gets $300,000 a year and then somebody that puts in 10 hours a week gets $30,000. Well, if we looked at what are our, what are our county council or?
County council gets $200,000.
No, yeah, I know. They're very, yeah. But there are other places where that's not the case, where.
Like the town of Chevy Chase.
Like the town of Chevy Chase. That's right. Or other places. So I just like, I'd like a little more information.
I, I, I have, in the last year, given all of the Thrive discussions that have gone on and the, the prospective ZTA, have in, in a remote setting, but have witnessed a lot of planning board meetings of the previous board. And there, there is this expectation or was this expectation that every member of the board equally was contributing in, in terms of questions and, and their knowledge for whatever application was in front of them. Yes, the chair controlled, you know, the agenda, the consent agenda, the, you know, the, the, the flow, answered media inquiries, you know, the whole was, was the front person. But I would not say that the $30,000, whatever it is, salary truly reflected the amount of time, an appropriate amount of time that was needed to address what are really complicated questions. I mean, it's basically looking at, as we look at variances and, and sometimes it can get really gnarly. That's like all day long, the, you know, entire day meeting. So I'm not as cool, you know, concerned about, you know, is, is, is that 30,000 or whatever? There's something about the complexity of, of the, how Montgomery County is the direction that they're taking and the complexity of work that's coming in front of the planning board that I, I don't know the last time there was a raise given to the rest of the planning board members, but I think that they deserve a heck of a lot more. It would introduce professionalism.
I'm not disagreeing that they don't deserve a lot more. I'm, I just don't understand how their, who, who controls their compensation and how that was decided.
Yep.
And, and I, I, I think we need to know that. And it may be, there may be something that we just don't, we don't know. And, you know, be, before we take a stand on going back and saying, well, let's, let's raise their salary.
All right. Well, look, I'll, I'll work with Todd. I'll commit to getting you any further information.
I just, yeah.
But, but if.
And I'm all in favor, you know, that's ridiculous to.
But it's ridiculous. I, I think would be, I think on those two points of geographical diversity and potentially making sure that the, 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 what I, the way, the general term I put it is that the way to ensure the, the level of engagement of all members of the board and, and, and their active involvement in their job. It's, you know, look for adjustments in salaries that are commensurate with the work that they actually carry. We don't have, we don't, it's not our job to suggest a number.
No, no.
But just to say, well, this has to be reviewed because it's part of the problem. And, and I think it really was frankly. I mean, part of what, what, when the old board fell apart, they were accusing the chair of being a dictator and part of why it was.
Yeah.
Not, not everyone else did what they were supposed to do. Yeah. Anyway.
I like the way you said the last thing.
Okay. Then I'll, I'll work on that language in that, in that spirit. Okay. Very good. Very joy. You okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay. Is there any other business that we need to review? If not, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us in person.